No City Council for February 19th, 2019 will come to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alahi?
Present.
Councilmember Lawler?
Present.
Councilmember Luthold?
Present.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Present.
And Mayor Rogers is absent.
Okay, our first order of business is oral communications. And we have two speakers. Your public comments are limited to three minutes, please. And the first speaker is Mrs. Laura Labouvet.
My voice isn't very, it's okay. Okay. Hi, I'm Laura Labouvet, and I live at 1-805-0 Arley Drive. And I'm here in opposition to the subdivision proposal. And so I just want to tell you a little bit about my feelings about this. We moved to Montessorino in 1998, which was twenty, over 20 years ago. We raised our children in the home that we bought. We fell in love with our home on Arley Drive, especially for the backyard. We have views of the trees and of the mountains, which allowed for complete privacy. We always expected, we always expected the character of our house to remain the same based on the heritage preservation and strict Montessorino new development guidelines. A fire should not be like winning the lottery. We are now retired and plan to live out our days in Montessorino, enjoying the scenic beauty, walks with our, with our close friends. If a three-house subdivision is allowed, everything we enjoy most about our home is taken away from us. Put yourself in our place. Would you want to be boxed in by a wall of construction five times the height of your fence line? All privacy will be taken away from us. We moved to Montessorino for its royal charact, rural character, never expecting it to become a tract subdivision. A developer should not be allowed to have this much negative impact on existing neighbors. Please do not ruin our Montessorino dream by allowing the subdivision project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Labouvet.
Hi, I'm Dan Labouvet. I'm also at 1-805-0 Arley Drive. And I also oppose the subdivision project that's being proposed at 18081 Saratoga Los Catos Road. So connected to this, I've been talking with the city for quite some time and, and had to involve an external lawyer to actually track down and get some, some different opinions than I was getting from the city. So in the council's hands, you should now have two documents. One from my attorney emailed yesterday titled Proper Processing of the Los Catos Subdivision, and one from me, which highlights, which is a PDF file, which is titled basically Vote No on the Subdivision Project. Please take a look at these documents and review them in detail. I'll just sort of go over the main, main points that my external lawyer raised. First is, was, you know, the city has been opposing routing this project through the Site and Architecture Committee to approve the site development permits. In my attorney's opinion, the provisions 10.08.050B and 10.08.060 and 13.04.08.0D perfectly sync, and therefore require site development permits to be referred to the Site and Architecture Committee. And furthermore, we're prepared to enforce this if need be, and we request that lawful processing is, is by the City of Montessorino. And we would like, within at least the next 15 days, for a special meeting to be convened to require that, that this subdivision proposal application be referred to Site and Architecture Committee for processing before any action before the City Council. Terry just informed me before the meeting that, that this has already been decided, which I'm very happy to hear, that I don't need to go to court to, to mandate this. So if that is indeed the case, I would like a formal notification of that. Secondly, my counsel did render an opinion about established law. In conversations with Terry and Kirsten, the primary premise was around zoning. And it's the opinion of my attorney anyways, that the general plan is at the top of the hierarchy of local government law regulating land use. So it just does not matter that the city's R1A zoning allows the proposed lot sizes because the subject subdivision application is inconsistent with the city plan in so many ways. Montessorino was primarily established based on rural, single-family, one-acre lots, precisely the configuration of the existing subdivision property. The general plan supports preserving the 100-year-old rural character of this property. In my document, I thoroughly list all of the controlling provisions, and I've organized it by required site development findings. I furthermore document the inconsistencies with the general plan. Please take, I know it's a very long document. It's written in the format that would be similar to what the city might prepare as a, as a report, but please consider that for your consideration and follow on information. The conclusion, though, is that, and my lawyer in his letter cited the case law around this, it's therefore, the City Council only needs to agree that the subject subdivision application is inconsistent with general plan to vote no. I think that's, that's very key to bring out. I hope you will agree that the subdivision proposal does not meet the high standards for new development in Montessorino. And Laura and I request that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Labouvet.
And just as a point of information, because we only found out later today, and I was going to forward that information on to the City Council, the applicant for the three-lot subdivision that's the subject of the two, last two speakers, has voluntarily agreed to take the project to Site and Architecture, which they'll be doing so on March the 6th. And that will be, of course, prior to the hearing that's tentatively scheduled for April 2nd. Thank you.
So our next order of business is written communications, and we have two from the public. The next order of business is the consent calendar. We have four items in the consent calendar, which we will take in one motion. Does anyone on the council wish to speak on any of these items? Councilmember Luthold?
Yes, I'd like to pull the warrant list, as two of us have items on the warrant list up for reimbursements. We need to address those first before they can be voted on.
Okay. Thank you. I also wanted to take out the warrant list, as I have two items that I would like to speak about.
Do we need a motion to pull that?
You could do a motion to pull that, or what you could do is make the comments now and then vote all three, all four items together.
Okay. The chair recognizes. Councilmember Luthold?
Okay. My reimbursement request is for attending the League of Cities New Council Members and Mayor's Training, which we all attended, council and mayor attended in January. It was very educational, and in Sacramento, and something that I think everybody should look forward to in the future.
And likewise, I attended the League of Cities Training in Sacramento, so I have one expense report for that and another one for mileage. So do I have a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second? Oops. Councilmember Lawler, did you second that?
I think I, I think I took that down.
Could you hit your second again? It'll say withdraw, it says withdraw second. Do you want to make it again? It letting you make your second?
Says to withdraw second.
Now I can't see. Did you intend on making a second?
I did.
Okay. So I've got, okay, so now I have a motion and I have a second. Should be able to, should be able to vote. Okay, I have three votes in. I have all four votes in. The motion passes 4-0.
Okay. The next order of business is new business, and we have four items, which we will take one at a time. The first one is the pavement management program and street improvement project update. A member of the public would like to speak on this matter, so please let me call Mr. Levine.
Madam vice?
Evening. First I'd like to say I am a member of the Rose Commission, but I'm speaking for myself and not the Rose Commission, so just like to make that clear. I also like to admit in public, I did not attend the last commission meeting. I don't have a family lawyer, and I really needed to take my wife out to dinner on Valentine's night, so I'm guilty as charged. Couple things. Number one, the last meeting, they have reviewed the report which you just said, you saw. And I guess my first point is there, the report was presented to the commission on the 14th, and we're now standing here on the 19th, so there was only five days difference from the point the commission really discussed it, even though I wasn't there on the 19th. And the, the, an iterative, interactive process, usually you can't do something of that importance over a five-day period if there's real input other than a precursorary review. So that was some concern. I'd just like to state Jessica's working real hard, she's doing a great job, she's a great hire, so none of my comments are directed towards Jessica. I'd also like to say that I think the commission needs closer ties with the council. Right now, we're two layers away, we're a small city, a 3,000, we're not Intel or IBM. Our input goes to Jessica, which goes to Terry, which goes to the council, so we're basically two to three layers away. It's kind of like the, the person that goes around the room. I'm not sure if you're hearing much of what we said. We've got five really talented people on the commission, and it's being filtered. I think really from a leadership standpoint, if you really want our input, and you want us to make, make us feel like we're part of the structure, that the communication with the council should be more direct, at least from a administrative standpoint, and at least that's what I've seen in the corporate world. Usually if you're too distanced, the people on the commission aren't going to feel like they're being listened to, even though in reality they might be. And I'd ask, maybe we work out some kind of a quarterly presentation where the commission's involved, where we're direct, and I'm not undercutting Jessica at all, because few of us have the technical ability that she does. And the last comment on the list that you're about to see, and I've already communicated with the manager, I repeatedly, and I do live on Poppy, I repeatedly expressed concern on the school neighborhood. I honestly don't feel there's anything more important in this city than providing safety to the children of the school. When coming here, I dodged potholes on Bruce, and as you'll see, Bruce is not on the list. The rationale that I understand why it's not on the list is it's such a big project that we need bigger amounts of funds. And I guess while reviewing this, and there's also Vista, yes, it is near my house, I don't care as far as myself, my car can go around it, so it has nothing to do with me, but I think if our true priority is the school, that both the council and all the staff members really need to remember that and not put it off into this long date. And the reason why this is close to my heart is I moved into the, in the neighborhood 20 years ago, 21 years ago, and Bruce was an issue then. It was brought to my attention that the fire department was probably getting in the way of putting in some speed, basically enhancements to slow things down. We're trying to pin that down. Basically, it's 20 years later, there's not a key kind of plan in place to really address this. I realize a lot of money's involved, I'm not going to get into the engineering thing, but I would urge the council to take into account the school area and to place that as a priority. And if there isn't enough money, I think we should investigate what it takes for money, and I don't think we could put it off for another 10 to 20 years. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We did have a staff report we wanted to present.
So we have a staff report from the city engineer, Jessica Khan.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. For those of you I haven't met yet, my name's Jessica Khan. Very happy to be working for your community and getting to know your neighborhoods. This evening, I'm going to give a brief presentation on the road projects from both last year and this upcoming summer. Background for anyone who doesn't already have this information, in 2017, the city completed a pavement management budget operations report, or PNP report. It's required every two years by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission to be eligible for certain types of funding. So this was completed in 2017. The next one will be completed later this year for 2019. The point of that type of report is to determine the road condition, specifically the pavement condition index, or the PCI. So each road is evaluated one by one, based on different factors such as potholes or general road failure. It's given a zero to one rating, zero being the worst, and 100 being a brand-new road. So the average for the city, and this is the map from 2017, is a 63 at the time of the 2017 evaluation. Based on that report, council set a goal of reaching 70, or a good status from a fair status, within five years, and to that end approved money in both the fiscal year 1718 and 1819 project to do both general pavement projects, which we're calling our PNP, or Pavement Management Program, and then more focused street projects, which I'll also talk about later in the presentation. So in 1718, these are the streets we completed, the dark green being Blanchard Drive, which was the Neighborhood Improvement Project, the rest just being general pavement projects, so no kind of curb or gutter were done, it's solely pavement treatment. Ridge Crest was actually completed by the county, we have an agreement that the county maintains that road. There are 16 segments, they were picked by the methodology outlined in the 2017 report, being best first. The idea being that if you treat lesser problems on better roads, you spend less money overall than trying to immediately reconstruct old roads while your new roads, newer roads deteriorate, if that makes sense. So this is the current PCI map, increased by two points to 65, which doesn't seem like much, however, had the city done no projects at all, the PCI would have decreased to about a 61. So while the net is only two points, the increase overall was about four. Just a few statistics, good streets were increased to 52% of all streets from 40 prior to the projects, and our poor and very poor streets reduced from 23 to 18% over just one year. So the streets for 1819, there's 18 street segments, also selected by the best-first methodology, obviously since the best, very best streets were done last year, these are streets with lower PCIs. Consideration was given to known utility projects. The Water, Water District has quite a few projects set out in a five-year CIP, so we avoided those streets so they don't get dug up immediately. And then also based on future pilot projects. So in the staff report, it did say the street list was tentative, that's due to bid pricing that varied quite a bit in the past three to four years. I do anticipate that we'll be able to get all the streets addressed that were listed in the staff report. Right now, I am preparing a bid package and hope to bring a council, a award for construction in April, and hopefully get this part of our pavement management project completed by early summer. Just so you know, so these will be all the streets after 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019, which is a big chunk of the streets finished. I think we're very much on our way of getting to a 70 PCI, probably in less than the five-year period that we anticipated. So the street improvement project, last year it was Blanchard Drive. That project came about by really a community getting together and deciding they lived on a really poor street and would like assistance with this, from the city to do something about it. After a lot of meetings that I'm sure many of you were a part of, the city ended up funding the street to put in curb and gutter and a pavement improvement on the street. So I have a couple of before and after pictures, but overall, the project looks pretty good. This year, there's really no community push from any neighborhood that staff received. Staff considered several locations, including the school area. The school area, so Bruce, Vista, and Sam Benito, were kind of set aside in both this and the general pavement improvement project, because it's very obvious that improvements are needed in that area, but those areas near schools are really great opportunities for grants. And so you don't really want to do those projects and have the improvements done, and then have nothing to match a grant with to do a greater project around the school in collaboration with that Safe Threats to School group and the school district. So the streets that were selected were Villa Vicaro, Palos Verdes Drive, and Equestrian Way. These streets in general don't really have any kind of curb and gutter. Palos Verdes has intermittent curb and gutter. These lack of improvements really deteriorate the road way more quickly because there's no edge kind of keeping the pavement together. Most of the rest of this neighborhood does have those type of improvements, which is why staff thought it was a good idea to kind of complete out that area of town. Staff held a community meeting on the 29th of January, it was pretty well-attended by the residents of those streets. They expressed some concerns about access during construction, and some people had private improvements on their streets, and wondering how that, they would be effective, but I think overall, they were pretty excited about the potential project. I gave a similar presentation to the one I just gave you to the Better Streets Commission last Thursday. I answered questions and inquiries about how the PCI was determined, if we were on pace to meet goal, our goal of 70 PCI, and kind of the cost and methods of doing the new PNP survey at the end of the year, which by the way, is mostly coordinated by the MTC. They pick out the consultant, and we're along for the ride. It's a really good benefit because we don't have to do the call for consultants or anything like that, and it's a really good method with all of the cities and the MTC's jurisdiction. So with that, if you have any other questions, I am happy to answer them.
So are there any questions from the council?
I did just want to add.
Yes.
Just, it was about the PNP and the Blanchard, because I was just going to add something related to Commissioner Levine, but I'll wait till you guys ask your questions.
So are there any questions from the council?
There's been a lot of rain, you know, in the last few, has that affected the condition of the streets? I mean, if you do your PCI index, you think it's gone down? Because you see more potholes now.
Right, definitely. And I think the PCI, the depreciation of 61, had we not done anything, is a calculated value based on just averages over time. The assessment that will be done at the end of the year will give us a real, more true PCI, which frankly, I think will end up being a little bit higher than the calculated average. But anytime you have storms and big rains, it exacerbates, you know, potholes are already there and creates new ones. So yes, short answer to your question, yes, there have been more over this rainy season.
Another follow-up I had was, because of the rain, there's, there's more rainwater just going everywhere, drainage going on. Have you looked at it, see in the city if there's some issues in some areas where rain is causing more damage than in other areas because of drainage issues?
Yeah, definitely. I think that was also part of why staff selected, the streets we selected for this year's Neighborhood Improvement Project, because it really has no drainage at all, which deteriorates the road way more quickly. So that's definitely for these Neighborhood Improvement Projects, a big consideration of improving drainage, which will keep the road way nicer for longer.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Luthold?
I've got two questions, actually. First is on Blanchard. I noticed at the top of Blanchard, there's some significant pooling. Has that been addressed, and is that part of the contractor's duty to repair?
Yes, it is. It's under warranty for a full year, and I think we did the final in October, November of last year, so till October, November of this year, they're under the gun to do that. We can't really do it until it dries up, so it will be addressed, but not until this summer.
Okay. And the second question is on Palos Verdes. I didn't get a chance to attend that meeting, but I'm wondering what's going on with gutters? Are we looking at potentially putting in gutters when this project goes in, or are we looking at dealing with the street as is and simply bringing, bringing the improvements to it?
No, part of that is to do curb and gutter, yes.
Are there any other questions? Okay, if there are no other questions, do we have a motion to accept this report?
I did want to add a comment.
Yes, you wanted to, yes.
And just to be clear, so all, all three of the streets for the, for the, here for the street improvement project, they'll include frontage improvements for all three of them, curb and gutter. The only thing I wanted to add was, was related to Commissioner Levine's comments regarding the school, and Vista, and Bruce, and Poppy. It is staff's highest priority to increase the pedestrian and bicycle safety in and around the school. And to that effect, you know, we have already worked on a number of changes that we made in the area, which I think most of you are aware of, related to the left turnpocket on Dave's, as well as the, the re-stripping of the parking lot directly across from the church, and some changes to the exiting, and some signage, and some, some arrows and so forth. So that was kind of the first phase. The reason why we, as Jessica mentioned, that we're holding on, on any sort of bigger project, including maybe sidewalks, to fill out what are missing on Dave's, as well as around Poppy a little bit, as well as, you know, other pedestrian and bike improvements in the streets in the area, is because we really need to come up with a much more comprehensive effort, which involves some, which would need us to apply for some grant funding, as well as possibly using some of our funds in our own general fund. The other part that we're still working on is there is a meeting of the school stakeholders. I can't, did that happen already? No, it's to be scheduled shortly. Yeah, so staff really needs to be meeting with the school stakeholders group, their parent, teachers, facilities manager from the school district, and the principal, they meet regularly, and we wanted to get a conversation going about the other parking lot, the one that faces to Poppy, and the potential for maybe some changing direction on that, which Jessica's also looking at some studies around that. So we, before we can really move forward a big way, and of course, there's also a community outreach component involved with all of this. So before we can really do all that, we really have all these pieces we need to work on. So I do understand the frustration that that community's had over the many years of not really anything happening, but as I would like to emphasize to the council and to the Better Streets Commission and to the community, it is a very high priority for us, and we are, you know, doing as much as we can at this point to prepare for, you know, some really major improvements and around the school. So I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for you. If a citizen comes to the council and they complain about the recent rains and, and water going down their, their driveway, and we've determined that, yes, it's a city street, do we, is that part of the pavement project that you have, or is that going to be separate? Is that going to be a grant when we do repairs?
Well, I, I think it just depends on the particular situation. We do have some city infrastructure, which does have to be maintained, and if, for example, a piece of that were to fail, it would be our responsibility to fix it. But there are also, we have infrastructure that's not necessarily maintained by the city that's on private property. There's examples of that all over the city, and in those particular cases, in general, that is the responsibility of the private property owner, though sometimes cities have to kind of nudge people to, you know, do things that they should be doing.
Okay.
I, I'm just trying to look at the funding. There's about a $900,000 amount that was transferred to the CIP, Community Improvement Project. Is that the money you guys are using for the placement?
Are you looking at the city's budget?
Yeah, I'm looking at the revenue and expenses for this month. It's a general fund reserve transfer for CIP, $900,000 was transferred.
Well, there was an initial transfer two years ago, the city's.
Well, that's, no, that's supposed to have been done a year-to-date, actual, so it's been a year-to-date, I guess it's within this year.
Well, what happened, it's a bit complicated in terms of what the budgeting is for the pavement management program and for Blanchard as well, because what happens is, for example, last year's budget included this year's projects, but they don't start until the summertime. So what often happens is, as we're working to adopt the budget, we're not expending the money in June to pay the contractor, because sometimes they haven't even started, and that was the case this past year. So what city, what the staff request and the council did last year, and will probably be requesting the same this year, is that the funds that are allotted for that fiscal year's pavement management. year's pavement management program and neighborhood, street improvement project, needs to be carried over to the following year. Because unfortunately, the fiscal year ends at June 30th, which is often right in the middle of the construction season. So we have to, you know, request that the funds that are allotted for that year's projects have to be carried over into the following year.
Yeah.
And so we should have a fairly large balance there currently because we haven't expended anything because the construction season hasn't started.
Yeah, the expenses basically are under construction, that $500,000 was allocated to the Blanchard project and $467,000 was spent so far this year?
Correct.
And then there's still another $500,000 left for neighborhood street improvement projects. I guess that's the funds that are available to you.
Yeah, and so those are the ones that are allotted, well, the actual, that is what's currently in that particular pot. But the actual amount that the council approved to be spent was 631,000, so that's what we have aimed for with this one. Now, with all of these types of projects, the budget allotment is one thing, but then we have to put a bid package together, send it all out to bid, and then we see what kind of bids we get back. Last year, we lucked out, the pavement management program bids actually came in lower, so we had a little bit more extra money that we could still use, which we basically have added to this year's program. So we're hoping for the same thing again this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? So if there are no further questions, do we have a motion to accept this report? Pavement management program?
So moved.
See, I can't see it here.
Oh, sorry. In this particular case, there's no motion necessary. I mean, we're just providing information and giving your report and asking questions.
Okay. So the next, thank you so much, Jessica, for your good work. The next order of business is the 2019 City Picnic, and we have a speaker for that. That is our city.
I think we have a staff report.
A staff report?
Yeah, the typical order of business is staff report, question, speaker.
Basically, thank you, thank you. Good evening, council members. Basically, what you have before you is the question of whether the council wants to host a picnic. In the past, probably 10 or 12 years, the council has been hosting a citywide picnic annually. It typically takes place late summer, early fall. The planning has to start six months ahead of time, and that's why this item is before you tonight. So council, or staff is looking for a direction as to whether, one, the council wants to host the picnic, and staff is requesting that council consider increasing the budget. Typically, in the past, it's been budgeted for $10,000. The past, in 2018, we had a record attendance, I think it was like 314 people, RSVPs, which is about 80 to 100 people more. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any questions about that.
So before we move to questions, I would like the city council members to volunteer their time to assist in the preparation for the picnic.
That's assuming we're doing a picnic.
The day of the picnic, if we decide to do it. But I want you to think about it before you approve it. Besides, you are well-paid for it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's move to questions.
Well, I mean, the picnic has been phenomenal, and I think expenses are going up because you have been so successful at attracting people to come here. So if you do a lousy job at the picnic, we have no expenses next year. So it's been phenomenal, and you guys really work hard at it, so you have to be congratulated. One thing I was trying to figure out, there's a lot of people who come there that are not from the city of Monticello. When I was there last time, there's a lot of people that brought guests who were close by, relatives and everybody else. And I'm trying to figure out if that's a budget item we should worry about at this time or not, or track that, or do something else with it or not. Because, I mean, you could add some tickets for non-Monticello residents, I suppose, but I don't know if that makes a huge difference.
And I thank you Vice Mayor Turner for saying that. The city clerk didn't stress it enough, but the main issue for us has been that the brunt of the work to do all of it really falls heavily on the city clerk. And, you know, I help out with loading, unloading, throwing out trash, and do all the things. Of course, I don't mind doing that, but it just, you know, other city staff isn't necessarily available that weekend sometimes, so we don't have that. So it is a budget thing, but it's also a, you know, or, you know, getting help the day of the event. I mean, I think Andrea's pretty okay with getting everything set up, but it's really the day of, early in the morning, setting up.
Wiping tables.
Wiping down tables. I mean, you know, in larger cities, you have your public works department, you have your facilities department, division, and they can go and do all that. Well, for our little group here, that falls to all of us. So the only thing that we would request is we, you know, I think last year's picnic, actually, in my opinion, turned out to be quite awesome. But if we're going to do it, we do need probably a few more dollars because we have a huge attendance, but we also really need to get some additional help, whether that's really getting the youth commission to step up to the plate, which is always questionable, or maybe council people, or just anyone in the community who might be willing to help out. That would be enormously helpful.
So we don't, we don't have a motion here either, right?
Well, the main thing we're looking for tonight is we, the actual budget item won't appear until we work on the draft budget, which will be in May. However, we have deadlines to book the date and get the caterer, so we really wanted to get a feel from the council tonight, you know, are you interested in having the picnic? And if so, you know, we would look at booking or spending a similar amount in anticipation of that.
Oh, should we make a motion then, to host the picnic, allocate the budget and staff, and to accomplish all of this?
Before you do that, I think you have one speaker card?
Oh, do I?
Did you?
No, not, oh, no, not for this.
For this one?
Oh, no, not for this.
Not for the picnic.
Okay, sorry. I thought there was one. Okay. So yeah, so you would just want, you don't necessarily need a motion, just a consensus that, yes, you would like to proceed with it and that exceeding last year's budget would be acceptable. That'll come back with the budget, and then the date to be selected.
I don't think we have a date yet, do we?
We don't have a date nailed down, but I think it's probably going to be the last, this last Saturday in August, not the last Saturday, the second to the last Saturday, which I think is the 23rd, August 23rd, I believe.
And that was because, didn't they make some changes to the?
I believe they are closing, the information that I received is they are closing the larger picnic areas to set up for the fantasy of lights, and they closed those picnic areas September 1st is the.
Which is earlier than they've done in the past.
It was earlier than last year.
So that's why we have, we'd have to have it in August this year.
So August 24th is the Saturday, 25th would be the, would be the Sunday. So that's, that's what I would try to do, is try to grab that date, reserve that date, August 24th. And that's why I'm looking for a council direction, because I need to do that this weekend to grab that site. Otherwise, it goes quick.
Okay, so let me go around the table. Councilman Elary?
It sounds good.
Councilman Luthold?
Yes, it sounds great.
Councilman Lor?
Yes.
I say yes.
Okay, so we'll go under the assumption of approximately what we spent last year, which will fold into the budget, so you'll see that when it comes to you in May. And Andrea will go ahead and.
Also, there's a commitment from us to do some, to help you guys out.
And maybe what we'll do as we get closer, we'll reach out to you guys and the community, maybe, to see if we could get some sign-ups for different things and to get more like it used to be in the early days of the picnic.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next order of business is the wildfire emergency preparedness committee, and we have Terry to talk about it.
This, the, a number of council persons, you know, in my regular meetings and other situations, have come to me and asked me, you know, a bit about our preparedness for wildfires and emergencies in general. I've also met with a number of residents, some who live up in the hills, who have also come to me and say, Terry, what's going on? And, you know, is there any way I can participate? And so I've, I've just had, there's just been a lot of discussion I've had with a number of individuals around this topic. And of course, given what's been going on in California this past year in Paradise and the previous years with the Tubbs Fire and the other ones in Sonoma and in Napa, you know, there's just a lot more heightened awareness around emergency preparedness, as there should be. Things have definitely changed, and we are seeing, you know, events like California has never seen before. So, you know, of course, one of the city's highest priorities is to be sure that we are prayer-prepared in the event of an emergency or a wildfire. And so I'm not going to go into great detail in the report, but I did, I wanted to provide the council, particularly the new council members, as well as to the community in general, information on all of the things that the city is working on, which is extensive. We don't have an emergency manager. Most cities do have such an individual, and it's their responsibility to coordinate and be informed about all of this, so that is one of the hats that I wear, and so it's something that I am very much involved in. And it's, it's my general opinion, and the fire department, you know, and the police department and other persons in emergency preparedness and wildfire preparedness, you know, would tell you, as I've indicated in the staff report, that, you know, in terms of the operations of the fire department, police department, and all the support services that go around emergency and wildfire preparedness, we are in a good space. Now, I think that there's definitely more information that we need to push out to the community so they can, you know, see the bits and pieces of what that means and, you know, help inform them. But the one area that I have mentioned to a number of you and to many people in the community that I think that we really do need more effort in, and that's really involving our residents and at a more neighborhood level in, you know, wildfire preparedness, emergency preparedness. And I've given some examples for, one is, that I always use is the SCC Alert, which is this county's alert system that individuals can opt into to receive emergency messages. It's based on ZIP code in the event of wildfires or other particularly emergency situations. And the city some time ago mailed out postcards to every single household in the community in the hopes that everybody would sign up. I haven't, I'm still waiting on some data from the county as to what our sign-ups were, and I do think it increased the sign-ups, but I know it didn't do as much as we had hoped. So that's just kind of one example of, you know, a place where if we had a setup where we could involve residents and their neighbors to push out, you know, have you signed up, you know, for this type of thing like SCC Alert? And to that end, there are a couple of communities, one in particular, Los Altos, that has what's known as block action teams. We also have something similar, which I'm discovering a bit more, and one of the officers from the police department is here tonight, that is kind of the form, the early stages of formation of something similar to block action teams. But I'll just say specifically, in Los Altos, the community is divided up into neighborhoods, and there are, each neighborhood has a team, and there's typically a captain involved. And basically, that person or persons has all the contact information of all the people in their, in their neighborhood. And part of their job is to, say, for example, with the SCC Alert, we send out the postcard, they would then, you know, themselves, reach out to their neighbors and say, hey, you got a postcard, and did you know you can sign up for that, and do you need some help with it? And so it would just be another layer of the, of individuals basically volunteering in our community to help us push the word out. And it could be for many things. Another example was the wildfire preparedness community workshop that we held last September at Dave's Avenue. Again, we sent postcards to every single household. I was a little sad that we only had 45 people show up, but this could be another example of a more localized effort of people really pushing out, you know, information and trying to get people involved. So I'm giving you and the community all of this background information because it's kind of leading to, you know, what this, what this particular item is tonight. And that is, you know, does the council want to set up some form of committee, whether it be an ad hoc committee, which would be a limited time, very limited scope, limited scope, or more of a standing committee to, you know, have the council be more involved in, you know, the whole, overall effort of emergency preparedness and wildfire preparedness. And so what staff is recommending, and a lot of this has to do with the amount of work that may be required for a standing committee, is that, as I think I'm trying to emphasize, I do believe that in general, we are really quite prepared, but what we really could use is this more localized effort. So, you know, want to have a discussion tonight as to what the thoughts are and ideas of the council around this, but I would say that in general, you know, staff believes that, you know, that the ad hoc committee with more of the focused purpose on this sort of neighborhood outreach could be a really useful thing for city staff, as well as the community. So that's, you know, the basics of our idea. So tonight, we're just looking for some guidance and basically a consensus of what direction you'd like us to go, and based on that, we would come back to you with something more specific in terms of, I assume, a resolution of some sort that would formalize whatever it is you would like us to do.
Okay, so let me ask the council here, if they have any questions or comments.
I just, I think an ad hoc committee would probably be the best answer for this.
I, I'm looking at it as a more serious problem, you know, it's, when the League of Cities met, the first time I, there was one of the meetings I attended, there are three priorities on the agenda. One was transportation, one was housing, and one was airport noise. So I suggested to them to put fire also, fire safety as one of the top priorities for the cities, and it is now a top, one of the top four priorities in the city. And fire is not going to just be there for a little while, it's, you know, fire safety issues are going to be there forever. And the sooner we address it as thoroughly as we can, the better off we're going to be. I mean, an ad hoc committee may be able to do some stuff, and, you know, I understand, you know, your staff issues, and we have to deal with those to make sure you guys get the funding. But I think we need to get a strong fire committee set up because it's going to have to deal with the, our own neighbors, to make them aware of what's going on. We'll have to deal with other cities like Saratoga and Los Gatos to make sure they get on board. We have to deal with the Cal, you know, Cal Highway people to make sure they're on board when removing trees. And as strong a committee as you can set up right now, I think you're better off over the long haul, because we don't know when something like this is going to happen, and so we should, I would, I would say, let's, let's go for it and set up a strong committee, like a standing committee.
Councilmember Luthold?
Yeah, I guess I have a question here to make sure we understand the differences on ad hoc versus standing. I see that you've spelled them out in the staff report. And it indicates that an ad hoc committee has a less than a quorum advisory committee. Is that, does that translate into simple language that we would have no more than two members of the council on it?
Correct.
Thereby not triggering Brown Act, whereas as soon as we move to a standing committee, then we are triggering Brown Act compliance, notice requirements, and so forth.
That is correct.
And it could still be a standing committee even if you only had two council members on it. It depends on the subject matter and the duration as well. So an ad hoc committee would be more of a temporary committee set up for a very limited purpose. That could be doing outreach, creating these block action teams, and then once those are established and operating, there would be no need for the ad hoc committee.
Follow-up on that, if the ad hoc committee wants to involve citizens, they can do that on a discretionary basis to bring in citizens either as members of that committee or simply to talk to the committee? How does that work?
They could invite them to talk to the committee, but they could not invite them to be members of the committee. Once you add non-council members to it, it would have to be a standing committee.
I guess, sorry, one more follow-up on that. What would be the procedure if we did adopt ad hoc and then wanted to move to standing? Is there any complexity to that, or is that something that could be accomplished simply at the next meeting, properly agendized?
Correct. You just would do a different resolution, dissolving the ad hoc and creating a standing committee.
And just as a point of reference, that's exactly what happened to the Better Streets Commission. There was an ad hoc group initially, it was two council people, and then ultimately, through a discussion with the rest of the city council, it moved to Better Streets Commission with a, you know, a standing group of citizen advisors. The only thing I'll add, which, you know, may help you with some thoughts here, is I've had only preliminary discussions with the, with the town staff in Los Gatos about, I mean, as I mentioned, we don't have an emergency manager, and we are, we are too small to have so. such a position. But what I, my preliminary discussions have been, and they're just very preliminary, is because the town of Los Gatos doesn't have an emergency manager either, and because we share police and fire, and because we already have an established neighborhood watch and what's the other group? The CERT teams, which cover both cities, my preliminary discussion with town staff was, you know, maybe they would consider hiring an emergency manager and that we could consider funding a portion of it, as long as they were, you know, providing us the services of helping with the CERT and the block action teams and the neighborhood, neighborhood watch and so forth. So that is a possibility. And so, it, you know, another option could be that until, you know, we could move into something where there's a more dedicated staff person, that, you know, maybe the ad hoc committee could, could be the start. And as we did with the Better Streets Commission over time, we did move into a more of a standing committee.
So my turn to say something now?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to let you guys know, I don't know how many of you know, that this last summer, we own a home in Oregon and our house almost burnt down. It was like a mile away. So I agree with you, Councilman Ilahi, that fire is going to be one of the things we need to look at all the time. I also agree with Councilman, Councilmember Lawler here, who voiced her opinion about doing an ad hoc committee. In fact, she and I talked about this at length a couple of months ago, and we both agreed that we would like to start this ad hoc committee, look at it for a while, maybe a year, and then figure out, do we want to make, do we want to dissolve it or make it part of the fire department or the police department? And then, or make it a standing committee? Is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
Well, I agree with you. I, yes, I agree with you completely on that. And starting with an ad hoc committee, just to see where we're at, and if we do need, ultimately decide that we need more resources, then we could, we can make that transition.
So do you want me to go ahead and ask each council member whether they want ad hoc?
So, yes, we do want to do that. But before we do that, one thing that we would do is we would bring it back as a resolution and we would spell out exactly what that ad hoc committee would be doing and the, and the amount of time, which typically would be less than a year. And so, it would be helpful for staff if you could articulate what you think that this ad hoc committee would accomplish over the next year.
Okay. So do you want me to ask each council member now? Okay. Councilmember Lawler, ad hoc or standing committee?
Ad hoc.
Councilmember Luthold?
I'm fine, starting with ad hoc.
Councilmember Ilahi?
Yeah, I prefer standing, but I think the question was, we have to advise staff what the ad hoc committee would be doing.
Yes, yes.
So are we going to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Because I mean, my concern, obviously, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done with the city and with other cities and with the fire department, and a standing committee may have more power to be able to deal with all that kind of stuff rather than the ad hoc committee. Do you think the ad hoc committee would have as much say so and power and influence as a standing committee when they're dealing with Saratoga and other cities?
I think, I think so. I think really, whether it's a standing committee or an ad hoc committee, they only have as much power as this council gives them. And so, if you give them the power to meet with surrounding jurisdictions and other agencies related to wildfire preparedness and emergency preparedness, they would be the advocates for the city, whether you call them a standing committee or an ad hoc committee.
So I guess what we would ask then, the staff would describe in the resolution, the powers of the ad hoc can make them as broad as possible. That, that would be our direction.
Yes, in fact, I did talk to the mayor of Cupertino and Los Gatos and Saratoga, and they are interested in an ad hoc committee.
So just to clarify, so the ad hoc committee can only be the city of Monteserino, two members from the city of Monteserino?
Oh, okay.
If there's, if there's another committee that's created from elected officials of other jurisdictions, then that by definition would have to be a standing committee.
Yes, standing committee. Okay, so let's.
One more clarification, on the ad hoc committee, we cannot add any non-council members on there?
You cannot.
Yeah, so that's, that's one disadvantage of an ad hoc committee, if you want to bring in somebody else on board from the community. You can't do that.
So I guess I'd be interested in seeing what it would come to us, as it sounds like, with the broadest possible powers for the committee, to, to work on organizing block access teams. If the city, if those people unnecessarily, if they're able to have the power to reach out to other cities, not to form a committee with them, but to, to do the outreach and then bring that information back to our council, and then to report to us if they're running into roadblocks that would require a standing committee. That would also be part of what we want to be hearing coming back. So I think we're all, it sounds like what we're hearing is we want this, to have the broadest possible power with the least amount of overhead until it becomes clear we need the higher overhead.
So would, would budgeting be a problem at this point in time?
No, I mean, if, if it's kept to, you know, I mean, the reason why at this point I have been, you know, recommending the ad hoc more is because of the impact to staff resources. But we're, you know, we're getting close to the goal setting, which I'm, I have a feeling that wildfire and emergency preparedness is going to rise to the top for a new goal. You know, then that will play into the budget compilation process, and like I said, I'm having some discussions with the town over the possibility of, you know, sharing, paying a small portion of maybe a position. So then I would say, as we get closer to, well, the March 30th for the goal setting and then in May for the budget workshop, we'll be talking more about what that means specifically in terms of the actual dollars.
Yeah, I guess it really bothers me if only two council members can be on the committee because then you're not getting the community influence in there. Standing committee could have five members, three from the community, two from the council members. So, so we're not bringing in the people who are going to actually be, you know, going out and getting blocks because you could appoint people from different, different sections of Monteserino, bring them on the committee, you have a better chance of being able to get this committee to do something. Otherwise, it's just the two, you know, two from this committee and we have enough work on our plate as it is. So that's, that concerns me, that if you just do an ad hoc, you're not going to get enough people doing the work that needs to be done.
Yeah, those are valid concerns and.
They are.
And perhaps we should talk about it.
I mean, I guess a little bit of this depends on how quickly the council would like to have a committee formed. I mean, is, is the council willing to wait until we can get a better idea of the budget process? Or is the council, I mean, I, I can tell you that the whole, the idea behind the block action teams, I've been working on that for months. You know, I've met with several citizens, I've been meeting regularly with the town, talking to the police department and the fire department. So that's happening. You know, that doesn't, you know, I mean, unless the council tells me they don't want me to work on that, I will stop. But I assume that you do, and just from my conversations with you. So we're doing that. So if, if you're willing to, you know, maybe wait a little bit, because I, I can't stress enough that if, if you're going to set up a standing committee, that means that we are then going to have to, you know, there'll have to be agendas, there may have to be staff reports, there's going to have to be a person staffing it. You know, it's, it's not a lot of work, but given our current, you know, configuration of employees and responsibilities, I don't really have anyone other than myself that I could, you know, try to assign to this. And I just, after, you know, seven or eight, nine, 10 months, just moved the Better Streets Commission off of my plate on our new city engineer. So I, I don't know that I can provide the necessary assistance to a committee if you so choose to do that and you need it right at this moment.
So one of the things we could do is start with baby steps with an ad hoc committee and then move it to a standing committee when we have the budget, when we know exactly what we're doing and who's going to participate and how we're going to divide Monteserino into districts, right?
That is one possibility, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess my comment would be, it sounds like, I mean, number one, we know that there is a lot of urgency to get this going. And at the same time, our best opportunity to deal with the, the concern staff has is probably beginning with the goal setting on March 30th. So it sounds like if we could move, we could get a month's jump on this if we, if we're able to move forward with ad hoc as early as formalizing that next agenda. And then we can begin to work with staff on the budget issue and also to really suss this out more and maybe get a lot more community input because Mr. Ilahi's input is important here, I think. We know the community wants to be involved, so we need to figure out how to do that and then budget for it, what we can delegate to the community and so forth. Maybe we can, maybe we can do both, it sounds like.
It looks like Kirsten's already working on the date.
Well, we were just trying to, to get some definitions for what the ad hoc committee would be charged with, and I think we, the two we hear the most would be having the power to work with other jurisdictions on the issue of wildfire and emergency preparedness, and then on assisting on the whole effort of the block action teams. And Kirsten, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, but the meetings for the public can attend, correct? Even if we do an ad hoc?
Right, you just would notice, you're not required to notice them because the Brown Act doesn't apply, but you always could and you can invite the public to attend. So it sounds like what, maybe if, if you wanted to do the ad hoc committee as an interim measure.
Yeah.
That, the, the specific duties of the ad hoc committee would be to work with the city manager on organizing the block action teams and begin community outreach. And then the other would be to research programs other jurisdictions are using for wildfire and emergency preparedness.
Also look for any grants that may be available, since the League of Cities has considered this as a top priority. I don't know if they help with getting grants or.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I think that was enough, thank you.
Okay, so let's move to the next order of business, which is the amendment to the regulations and guidelines for the conduct of public meetings. Let me first go through some procedural items before allowing public comments. I have two cards, are there any more cards out there? Please fill out the blue cards if you wish to speak. May I remind everyone to respectfully challenge the idea and not the person? Let's set a positive tone so that others are more receptive to listening. Let us all participate in a productive council meeting. So your public comments will be limited to three minutes. So the first one is Mr. Walter Huff.
Staff, make a presentation first and then we'll.
Oh, you have a presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right. That's right, yeah. So we have two speakers. The first is our city manager and he will speak on the sections of the resolution that he is proposing. We amend.
All right, I just, sorry, I always speak too softly. Can you hear me now? I just wanted to be sure that we had, you know, so that everyone could see and the audience could see as well. And I do, I have one speaker card, there's one over there. Excuse me one second. So staff has brought before the city council tonight some proposed amendments to the, to a document that's referred to as the Regulations and Guidelines for the Conduct of Public Meetings. And this is a document that was created quite a few years ago and has been amended over time. It basically lays out the parameters for meetings on multiple levels. I won't go into the details, but as I said, it has been amended from time to time. Staff has been in need of, of updating it, particularly since we changed some things related to the, when the packet is published, a couple of other minor adjustments to it related to participating in city council meetings remotely. We didn't have anything specific on that, so we wanted to lay out what we felt would, you know, be the best parameters for that, some based on the Brown Act and others just based on the necessity for, you know, getting that set up properly so the clerk can do her job in terms of noticing properly. And also, we, staff is recommending some updating of, of items related to how items are placed on the agenda. So I was just going to go briefly through, you know, the ones that were more important So there's a section related to, it falls under the first part, is it letter A? Yes, letter A, number seven, agenda. This is a section of the, the regulations and guidelines related to how items are placed on the agenda. And in our city, we have a provision where items of business may be placed on the agenda by any council member, the city manager, or the city attorney. Now, as I've noted to the council in some correspondence I give today, it is, it is quite unusual to have such a provision in your, in your guidelines and regulations, particularly related to agenda items being placed on by city council members. However, we do have that provision and we've had it for some time. The, the one thing that staff is recommending here is that there be some clarification on how that is done. And so basically, staff is recommending some language, which basically speaks to the city manager's ability to help manage the overall workload, you know, given that there is a provision such as this. There's just a number of things that go into what goes on an agenda, the timing of it, how much goes on there, staff reports, and just a whole host of things which really drive what may or may not appear on an agenda. So staff wanted to just be sure that there was some clarification as to, you know, how the city manager was a part of this process. Then similar in this is just a minor change we needed to make. The staff made a commitment some time ago to publish the packet on Wednesdays instead of Fridays, and because of that, we needed to adjust the language slightly to reflect the two days earlier. So that was one, one part there related to agendas. Then another one, it falls under the Order of Business. And what staff is recommending is something that the prior city council has talked about a little bit, as well as the current city council, is adding a section at the end before adjournment, which would be titled Future Agenda Items. Now, this is a very common thing for cities to have. And in general, what this is, it's a, it's a section where a council person can talk about something they would like to be agendized, and based on that, the council can talk about it. And if there's a majority of council members that feel it should be agendized, then staff can take that and move forward with, you know, doing some work on it. Of course, being informed as to what that agenda item might affect in terms of staffing or budgeting and so forth at the time. But it's a great way in order for, and it's very common in many councils, to have this on their agenda so that, so that it's easy to do that. Whoops. All right. Then I just mentioned about the remote participation of council members. This is just a new section which, which would give clear, clear directions on how that would happen and what we really need in order to, to be efficient and get everything done that we need to get done in terms of noticing and getting all the, the process set up property, properly, excuse me. And then there was just a couple of other minor things at the end, which I won't go into, which were just for points for clarification. There's one other piece that's been added tonight, and this is an item that is related to the election of the mayor and the vice mayor. We, there had been some discussion, or at least a mention of it, with the prior council about staff, you know, taking a look at, into the future. And, and then of course, we have one council member in particular who has also, you know, been interested in us taking a look at this. So based on that. So based on that, we are adding that in as well tonight with the proposal to make some adjustments to when the mayor and the mayor, vice mayor are elected. Staff does not have a recommendation on this. We have brought forward some of the ideas and points that were presented by Council Member Luthold on this. But in general, as you can see, it speaks to two parts. One, during the years in which there's no change in council, and one piece during the years when there is a change in council. And the proposal is, I'm just trying to make sure I've got it right. The proposal would be that in the, basically when the city council shall, I'll just read it, "Shall conduct a yearly reorganization at its first regular meeting of December unless otherwise designated by the city council. On election years, the reorganization of the city council shall occur at the same meeting that the council certifies the election results, and the newly seated city council shall select the mayor and the mayor pro tempore." So with this language, that would mean that in the years, there's a new council, that it would wait for the vote until the new council is seated. In the other years, it doesn't matter because it's just a carryover of the same council. And that, I believe, was the majority.
I think you're missing one more.
Am I missing one?
Yeah, the preparation of the minutes.
Oh, yeah, these were just a couple of minor ones. They were related to letter E, minutes, preparation. There's one piece about set off in paragraphs, and as I previously noted in my correspondence to the city council, this is just something that's never been done. I'm not even sure where it came from. It just doesn't, it doesn't mean anything. And then the removing and addresses of persons because it's really a matter of privacy. I mean, technically, cities cannot require anyone to give their name or address. Any speaker can speak, and they don't necessarily have to give that. But we felt that it was important that, you know, we don't necessarily publish the addresses for privacy reasons. And with that, I believe that was all the changes.
Okay, thank you so much. So what I want to do is, before I ask for questions or comments from the council...
Do the public go first?
No, hang on.
First, we do questions.
Wait, let me go over to Council Member Luthold, because he would like to speak on his proposed resolution, and then we will get, we will go through each one of them after that.
Providing copies of these slides to people so they can follow along. If they're blind like me, they either see close or far, but not both. So on this issue, if we could go to the first slide, this issue came up, and I brought it up because I was researching, as a new council member, newly elected but not yet seated, how the mayor would be selected under the rules for my new position. And I discovered in that, by simply searching online, Government Code Section 36801, which is the California government code. And it says, "Council shall meet at the meeting at which the declaration of election results for a general municipal election is made pursuant to sections of the election code, and following the declaration of election results and the installation of elected officials, choose one of its number as mayor and one of its number as mayor pro tempore." This concerned me because the last council had set December 4th, before we were seated, to be seated on December 18th as the day that they would select the mayor. I contacted staff and sent a note to the prior council saying that it didn't look like that complied with state law. And to make a long story short, what I got was some information back that said, "We're going to go forward under the policies we have in place, and if you want to address this, you can address it next year when you're on the council." So that's exactly what I'm here to do. If we go to the next slide, that again repeats the state law on this issue, which says that the city council shall meet at a meeting on which the declaration of the election results for a general election is made, and following the declaration of the results and installation of the officials, choose one of its number as mayor and one as mayor pro tempore. Now, going to the next screen, this is a subset of the transmittal that I received from the city attorney on November 29th, and a copy of this has also been included in the written submissions that we received today. And this refers to the city attorney's position, which was expressed to the prior council, that Government Code Section 36801 contains no penalty or consequences for the failure of the council to abide by its time constraints, and that the essence of the statute is not the timing of the rotation, but the direction that the mayor and vice mayor should be appointed at least every two years. And continues, "The statute does not even address the rotation of mayor and vice mayor during non-election years. For these reasons, it's clear that this statute is not mandatory, is not a mandatory obligatory statute, but rather a permissive one." However, it also notes in the city attorney's analysis, some sites to the case law. And one of the quotes is, "Generally, requirements related to the time within an act which an act must be done are discretionary rather than mandatory or jurisdictional unless a contrary intent is clearly expressed. Invariably, courts look to the procedure's purpose or function. If the procedure is essential to promote the statutory design, its mandatory and noncompliance has an invalidating effect." If we go back to that prior screen, the words here are "shall meet at a meeting after the election has been announced, and following that, the new council shall choose its mayor." So the intent, in my opinion, is that the statute was very clear. But there's a question, and let's go forward now, two slides. If the question is, is this director, directory, or is it mandatory? If there are no dire consequences for failure to comply, then something may be directory, and you can choose not to follow it. However, I reached out to another attorney on this issue, and that attorney's opinion was that if the city were to adopt a rule that violates a state statute, it could be challenged as an abuse of discretion. So that's what brought this before the council now, which is, what do we do about this as a council here today? And my bringing this forward for the council to make a decision is that we should follow state law. The answer is very easy here. We should do what other cities have done to comply with the state law, making the election year appointment occur after the new council is seated. Now, a couple more points of history here. Up until 2008, the city was doing this right. The 1996 adoption of these regulations indicated that the election should occur in an election year. It should, it can occur in late November or early December, but if there's an election year, it has to occur after the new council is seated. Someone decided to change that in 2008. For whatever reasons, they decided to change that, they brought it before the council, and the prior council changed it. Apparently, no one has brought this up before, and I am doing this for the first time now and seeking the correction. So the old language, if we go to the next screen, the last sentence is the important one. This is what our policies and regulations say prior to making a change. Says, "The mayor and mayor pro tempore shall be chosen prior to the newly elected council members being seated." So that's what I've attempted to change. When we roll over to the proposed new language on the next page, the language that I've put forward for this proposed resolution is that there shall be a yearly reorganization at the first meeting in December. That's in keeping with the spirit that we will intend to rotate this position about once every year unless otherwise designated by the city council. In election years, it shall occur at the meeting where the certified election results and the newly seated council has the obligation to select the mayor and mayor pro tempore. Continues, "At the time of the yearly reorganization of city council, the city council shall elect one of its members to serve one year as mayor and one of its members to serve one year as mayor pro tempore. In making the selections, the city council will consider the principle of rotation," this is also in our prior law, "to allow each of the members the opportunity to serve as mayor. The election of mayor and mayor pro tempore shall be placed at the end of the agenda." And then we have the procedure. The mayor will ask for the council for nominations for mayor. Any council member wishing to make a nomination may do so. A council member may nominate himself or herself. Nominations do not require a second. These are, this is some new language that I'm suggesting we put in, following the models of some other cities, because by allowing someone to nominate themselves and by not having a second, we really open it up so that anyone could put themselves forward or anyone can put someone else forward here. But it's not really pre-suggesting how the vote is going to go through the nomination process. Says nominations do not require a second. The council will vote on the nominations in reverse order that the nominations were made, with the last nomination voted on first. That's just a procedural suggestion, again, adopted from another council's law on this seemed to make sense. The mayor shall be appointed by the affirmative vote of three or more members. If no mayor is chosen through the first nomination and voting, the process shall be repeated. After the mayor is appointed, the nomination will be repeated for the selection of council member to serve as mayor pro tempore." So those are the proposals. I'm not going to speak to my comments yet about this. I'd like to reserve that till after we've heard public comment.
Okay, thank you. So Kirsten, do you want to do public comments now?
Are there any questions?
You want to ask questions first?
Yeah, do you have any questions regarding that proposal?
Okay, so are there any questions with this proposal?
I, yeah, let me, I mean, everybody's done a lot of work on this. My concern is, this is a fairly far-reaching proposal. There's a lot of changes in the amendment to regulation and guidelines. And as I went through it, and it was just a cursory thing to look at things, starting from, the city manager is asked that the agenda items, this is seven, be placed based on his understanding, the timing is to be controlled by the city manager. Now, I don't know if that's all the city manager, that's all the city manager needs as far as the timing of this.
Are you talking about seven?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, 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 before we do that, hang on. Let me, let me, let me go through a process here. So I think what we ought to do is go section by section, right? And let's discuss it one at a time, and then we'll look at each section and then decide to approve the language or amend the language. Okay, when we're done with one section, then we vote on the full regulation. Is that okay with you?
You could get a consensus, but what we need you to do is to, is to approve the resolution?
Yes.
And that would include all the changes. So we could go through each one, get a consensus, and then move on to the next.
So why don't I do this? Let me, let me go through it.
Well, sorry, point of order on this, if I may. The, I think if we're going to go, the question was, questions for Terry or for myself related to what we presented. Then we need to get public comment taken care of.
Yes.
Then we need, then we go back to the discussion about the big picture or individual items.
All right, I'll hold off.
If I, if I'm right.
Okay, so, you okay? Okay, so the first, the first amended section is section eight. A, Meetings and Item Number Seven Agenda. Are there any discussions or amendments from the council?
I thought you were doing public comments first.
Public comment?
Oh, yes, of course. Okay, so let me call Walter Huff first for public comments.
First, Kirsten, before I start, I think there's seven people here in the audience, and you talked about having a decor, Ms. Chair. There are two mayors back here. I've seen nobody that's been vile in any way. I'd like to have an apology, quite frankly.
I, look, I'm a school teacher. No, no, look.
No.
I'm a school teacher for the court school, and it's customary for me...
You never announced that with anything else except for this. Why would you do that?
Oh, I'm telling you.
No other amendments, anything else that you had, you didn't say anything about that, just this one. You wrong on this first?
Mayor can make any comments at the beginning of the meeting and talk about the process for the meeting.
Okay. Andrea, would you give me one minute? Would you call me one minute out of my three for me, please? Walter Huff, Billmore Estates, Asheville, North Carolina, and escrow in Montessorino and two lots. I really can't believe this, quite frankly. And this really goes back to you, Mr. Luthold. You know, I listen to all these notes and everything, and you vilified most of us when you were out here, and yet here's a guy, Curtis Rogers, done an outstanding job, an outstanding job. I don't agree with him, I don't break bread with him, but he's done an outstanding job. And if you want to change this in the future, I get that. But you know what you don't count on? You don't count on the fact that all of us that were council members, we got a call from Marshall, and I got a call from Law, and Sue Gardner, "Can you make this meeting? Can you make that meeting?" And we made those meetings. Our committees were something like 97% of the city of Montessorino, that was represented in most cases on every single committee out there. That was unheard of. That was absolutely great. And I think there's a deserving of the fact, no one's trying to take anything away from the newbies, if you would. Everybody gets a shot at this. But to take this away from him, I think this should have been something at the very, at the very start, not to go through two meetings like this. And you talk about council, I have council, Brad Bosomworth, who I spent almost two hours on today, he spent almost eight hours with Wilson Sansini. And, you know, up here you have the word "shall," not "must," but "shall." I'm going to challenge this, I'm just going to tell you, okay? And so I've come to my own conclusion. I'm either thinking that you're an idiot, or you're completely evil. There's no two ways about it, in my opinion. There could be a third possibility, all of the above. I'll let you make that decision. Thank you very much. You still owe me an apology.
May I please remind everyone to be respectful, and you challenged the idea and not the person? Thank you. Okay, so let me call Mr. Billawala, Billawala?
Thank you. Councilmember Luthold's proposal is based on the idea that the city is violating the The city attorney has opined that that is not the case. Councilmember Luthold has quoted some unnamed attorney as saying, "Oh, well, yes, it is." We, in order to move forward this, I think you have to believe that Mr. Luthold is correct and that we are violating the law. If you read that law carefully, it seems to say that we should have a mayor pro tempore, not a vice mayor. Right now, we have a vice mayor, not a mayor pro tempore. There is a difference. If Mr. Luthold is correct, San Jose is in violation of the law. It elects a mayor. That mayor is not selected by the council every year. So I ask you, before you throw out what our city attorney, who is a municipal expert, has told you, please take that under due consideration. Montessorino is a diverse community with people of many backgrounds and many different viewpoints. I believe that it is critically important to follow the ideal of being polite and respectful to everyone, whether or not you agree with them. During my time in Montessorino, I have heard many, many complaints about people engaging in wrongdoing, improper behavior, criminal conduct, and violating laws. These are serious accusations. Perhaps in the real world, such behavior and such activities occur with unfortunate frequency. However, I believe that... However, I believe that part of being polite and respectful means refraining from leveling such grave accusations unless one is virtually certain of their truth or correctness. I would like the council, I would like to ask the council to lead by example and follow this ideal. Please don't make accusations of wrongdoing or violations of law unless you are certain that you are correct. And in the discussion, I would like to hear our city attorney respond to Mr. Luthold's accusation that the city is violating the law, and also whether San Jose is violating the law. Thank you very much.
Let me now call the former mayor, Burton Craig.
Thank you. Better hold it up like this. By the way, you are working on a taller podium, right?
No, but we did raise the height of that.
Yeah.
Actually, it's pushed down a little bit. You might have to pull it out.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so council, nice to see you. Burton Craig over on Vineland Avenue. And a couple of points I would just like to bring up about the agenda item tonight. This is an important agenda item. On prior councils, we would always make sure that we had a fully seated council before we would attempt to have any type of an agenda item like this. Everybody deserves to be here. Councilmember Rogers made it very clear at the last meeting, because I was at that meeting, that he would not be at this meeting. And initially, this, when I first heard about this agenda item, it was going to be on the March 5th agenda. Why it was moved up, I don't understand. I don't know if you're trying to cut him out or whatever, but I think it would have been important for him to be here, since this really does affect him, because it would be, it would be pretty humiliating if he were to be removed from the mayor's position because of the changes to the resolutions that are being made. I also noticed that the remote meeting has changed. I don't understand why you need two weeks' notice. In the past, all we had is the Friday before. I think in two weeks, I mean, I think it's courtesy to do that, but there's always last-minute changes that need to be made. We're all pretty, pretty busy people. We all have very important jobs, and a lot of times you may be called out of town at the last minute. I hope that a provision is made so that people who have to leave a meeting or have to have to have a remote meeting set up within a few days are able to do that. And again, I understand that you have to do this 72 hours before the meeting occurs, but that's still plenty of time to have a remote meeting posted and to notify the public. There seems to be some disagreement between councilmember Luthold and our city attorney. And instead of debating the legal meaning, meaning of what's going on tonight, I think the council should seek other opinions. And if you have to, even go to the state attorney's office, because that's where all of these regulations come from. As a prior speaker brought out, we have a city attorney who's an expert in civil code. As you will find, as you go out amongst your peers at different committee meetings, we are very lucky to have her. She knows her stuff. She doesn't make this stuff up, and rarely does she speak without fully knowing what she's talking about. So if Kirsten says that the law was followed, and it's been followed for the last 10 years, then I'm very confident that the law has been followed. I do think that the current system serves the residents of Montessorino very well. The current council has worked with everybody for the prior year. They see what kind of work that they've done. They see how they've attended the committee meetings. They've seen how they've attended the commissions, and they see how they've brought value to the city. I think that the existing council should be the ones that choose the new mayor. I think that will best serve the city. If the council does approve this amendment, it should take effect during the next election of the mayor. You should not have to remove the existing mayor or even have a, a new election to do that. The mayor serves at the pleasure of the council, and any time he can be removed. But let's not use the changes to the meeting proposals to do something right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have our last speaker, Susanna Craig.
I'm not as tall as he is. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out. As councilmember Turner mentioned, my name is Susanna Craig. I live on Vineland Avenue, and I was the former first lady. Yes, levity. So I'm here because, as we all know, lawyers can interpret the law however they see fit. And in this case, I think that our new council member is interpreting the law to fit his I was not happy to hear that this agenda item was on the, for this meeting. And I think that the only thing it does is that it creates a very divisive community. This should not be something that we should be doing right now. It's certainly not something that I would want, and certainly not the reason why I voted for you. So the other thing I wanted to say was that, to me, I have never spoken before the council before. My husband was in here for eight years, and he did it for the right to help the community. But for me, as a, as a community member and as a resident, it seems to me that this issue is more of something to settle old scores. This is not the position, if you're running to be part of the office so that you could settle old scores, instead of understanding the way that the community works, the way that, that the city hall works, that the way that the, the city, the city manager works, the lawyer and so on, if you don't take the time to understand how business runs and you come in here and make sweeping changes, you will fail. It has been proven over and over in businesses. So I would encourage you to take the time to see how the city runs, and if you don't believe that what the city has been doing so far, you've brought lawsuits before to the city, bring another one on, and let's settle it out. But I frankly hope it doesn't get to that point. I hope that we see besides this, leave bygones be bygones, and let things ride for the year, and then see where we go. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay. So thank you for all your comments. I will take this back to the council. So let me, let me go through each section now.
Let's, I wanted to address it a little bit different, rather than each section, because my, my concern is that the whole thing is a mumbo jumbo, and we need to have it reviewed properly and see if we need to add additional things to it or not. Because if you, so that's why I want to address the whole thing, to show how much of a mumbo jumbo it is.
Okay, so, so let me, let me tell you what I want to do, please. What I want to do is get everybody's input on it, on each item that we have amended, and then we can decide whether we want to keep it or amend it.
Well, I, I know what you want to do, but I can address it the way I want.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, basically, you know, a lot of work I've gone on it, and my, my concern is when we're doing this kind of an amendment, first of all, obviously, everybody should be involved. All five people should be here. But in any case, if you're going to do it, we need to probably set up at least an ad hoc committee or somebody to look at it. I mean, you're starting on an agenda item where the city manager has, you know, expressed that based on how his limited resources, he wants to be able to do an orderly placement of the item for consideration. And the question is, that takes power away from the city council. Maybe it doesn't do everything that the city manager wants. Maybe he needs more than this. Maybe he needs less than that. But I think we need to have a proper discussion on that particular item, either as an ad hoc committee or some other committee, to see whether that's appropriate or not. There's an item about all these dates and timings, about when a person should report, if they're going to be absent, they have to do it before 5:00 PM on Monday, the report participation as to what date and time that should be done. Those things need to be looked at. If an item is submitted, you know, the items have to be submitted two Fridays before the placement. I understand, it's, it's pressure on the city clerk to try to get everything done by Wednesday, but is, you know, is four days necessary, or would Monday, Monday be okay? That may be another thing that a committee can look at and decide, that's not the, quite the timing. There's another item where something has, needs to be done by 12:00 PM on the Friday before. Should it be 12? Should it be 5? Should it be Monday? We need to look at that. There is a, item B, under, I think, I think it's, yeah, addressing the council, it says that the person should give his name and address, whereas we've taken away the address thing in some other parts of the meeting. So does that, is a, is a public participant who's addressing the council required to give their address or not required to give their address? This is on, let me see if I can find that.
There is.
Yeah, it's item B.
Section E, minutes, preparation of minutes.
Yeah. Men are addressing city, yeah, state. Then you've gone to, then, then we have this issue on addressing the mayor and the non-mayor, and, you know, there's a sentence in there which doesn't make sense. It says, it says the mayor should be asking for nominations to the mayor. I mean, if you don't have a mayor, so who's going to be asking for nominations? So if you can read that. Says the, the election of mayor and mayor pro tempore shall be placed at the end of the agenda. The mayor will ask the councils for nominations for mayor. I mean, what does that mean? We don't have a mayor yet. So who's asking for nominations?
Just for this one, it just means the existing mayor.
But there is no existing mayor. This is when elections have been held, the mayor has termed out, the mayor pro tempore has not been elected, so you don't have a mayor.
Is that, yeah, I didn't even.
That could happen. You're right.
Yeah, so, so, so it's just hanging out there. And, and these are just some of the things that I've noticed. My, my thought is, oh, the other thing is, there's other things that we may be interested in doing if we're doing it. For example, you know, from the public, if somebody's addressing us, maybe we should ask if they're being paid by somebody. You know, attorneys, obviously, we know they're being paid, and they come in the lobby. But other individuals who are addressing it, are they being paid by them or not? And finally, you know, the city council has expressed that this is not legal. I mean, this, this is, what, what was going on was discretionary. What the city council did was appropriate, and it's not an issue. And I would respect that opinion. I mean, I, I know the city of Los Gatos does it the same way. I don't know if there's other cities who do it the same way or not, that we do it. I know the city of Saratoga does it differently, so there are cities who do it differently. And again, the word shall really doesn't mean shall. I mean, as an attorney, the word must, as Walter pointed out, is, is, is a, is a, is a must word. The shall is not a must word. And also litigation only is going to happen if we bring it about. So if one of us is going to sue the city to prove a point, then it's going to happen, but I don't see any of us spending money on suing the city ourselves. So my, my thought is, let's set up an ad hoc committee now, look at it, see what other things need, could be added and changed, and refine the language so that it makes sense. And also, my thought also, another reason I would want to do it, I think the least we can do is, out of due process respects or whatever else, Curtis should be here in this discussion. He's not being here, you know, and, and I don't say this is a personal thing going on, but there's an appearance that this whole fight is based on personal, you know, thinking, and we don't want that appearance. I mean, that's sometimes more critical than anything else, how people look at you, they think, hey, we have started making Montessorino a place where people are, you know, the city council people are fighting each other. I don't want a, Montessorino to become the laughingstock of this whole Bay Area, that, you know, mayor gets elected, and two months later, he gets bumped out on a technicality, because we have the power to remove the mayor at any time. The city council can vote to remove them anytime. Let's clean this up and maybe give some assurance to the individuals who are interested that this is not about throwing the present mayor out, this is about cleaning things up. Thanks.
Okay. So, thank you for your comments.
I appreciate your letting me do it my way.
Councilmember Alahi.
Thank you.
So let me call in councilmember Luthold, since he wants to speak.
Yeah. I think I just want to speak to some of these global issues first, since councilmember Alahi raised them, and that is the suggestion of an ad hoc committee, or the suggestion that we need to look into this further. That would then limit us to two people talking about it. So it's on the agenda. It's been properly agendized. We've heard from the public today. I think it's our responsibility, we've heard from staff about the changes, that they would like to implement. So I think we're here today to have the public forum open, all of us involved, discussion. There is a reason that this was brought forward on this agenda, and that is because our, we need to deal with this now. There've been meetings canceled due to the attendance at the League of Cities. Quite frankly, the mayor has missed two of the first three meetings so far, of the last three meetings. We can't afford to wait and have this push out into the budget season. So my comment on this is, we're here today, and I think that Mayor Pro Tem Turner has the right idea, which is, let's work through each of these. Let's have the discussion about what each of these entails. That's what we prepared for today. And we can go through them one by one. We can amend them as a council. And then we can look globally at whether we move on this today, or whether there is reason not to move on it today once this is done. So that's my suggestion.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, I'd like to talk about, just briefly, the selection of mayor and mayor pro tempore. The reason it makes sense to me to amend the guidelines to comply with Government Code Section 36801 is because we, as newly elected council members, represent our constituents. Why then would outgoing council members have the authority to choose the new mayor and mayor pro tempore, given they will no longer be representing the community? I believe the incoming council, as the new representatives, should have the opportunity to select who they feel would lead them best and provide our constituents with proper representation. Why wouldn't we do it like Congress? As for the, regarding the guidelines, agenda number seven item, I am not comfortable giving full authority over agenda items to city manager, given that as city council members and city attorney and city manager can all put agenda items on, on the agenda, I think we should all be able to at least be consulted in terms of prioritizing things. And lastly, regarding item 11, with the remote participation of council member, I, I do not understand why this, we need this, actually. I think as council members, we all have our, we all practice due diligence in, in alerting and understanding the importance of notifying the city of an upcoming absence in a timely matter. So I'm not quite sure why we would need this.
Okay.
Okay. So what I wanted to do was to go through each one of these items on the agenda, so I can get clearly what you guys are thinking, because right now you made comments on, on most of them, and councilmember Lawler made comments on parts that you didn't make comments on, so please, let me, let me lead this, this group, right?
Yes.
And let me go through the agenda. Can I do that, councilmember Alahi?
No, it's your.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so let's go through item number seven. Do I have any comments from anyone on item number seven?
I think.
Councilmember Luthold.
In addition, I think Ms., councilmember Lawler made the comment very similar to what I was going to say about this, which is, I think this council has already, before it, and entrenched in our regulations, a very, very important right, and that is the right to have any council member bring something forward. Not every city has that. I think it is very important, I think this example is, is a good example of one that at least one council member felt strongly about and brought forward. If it had been able to be kind of gate-kept, for lack of a better word, by any other person, either the mayor or the city manager, I'm not sure that it could have ever come forward without a lot of, of additional work. So I think we have something, and while I'm very conscious of the city manager's comments about staffing and the importance of managing things, I think we've all heard that, and I think we're all, we're going to be working with the city manager. We do have now the ability to put things on the agenda at the end. But I'm not ready to suggest that we give up the timing to be determined by city manager. So I'd like to put forward an amendment to simply strike that sentence, which, that phrase, which begins with the timing to be determined by the city manager based on the orderly placement of the item for consideration. So I'd like to put forward that. So I'd like to put forward that amendment, if I have a second.
And everything else that our city managers suggested stays?
And everything else would stay under seven, at least for now, unless someone has an amendment to something else separately from this. But I think if we take it in pieces, it'll work best.
Okay. So I have Councilmember Lawler's suggestion, Councilmember Luthold, and Councilmember Alahi.
I'd rather have a committee that sits on and examines why, you know, Terry needs this and whether it's broad enough for what he wants and whether it can be reduced rather than just, you know, strike it on its face.
Okay, okay. So let me give my opinion on this one. I also think that the city manager should not be the sole determining factor in making whether something goes on the agenda or not. I think council members should be part of it as well. So I would be in favor of deleting, with the timing to be determined by the city manager based on the order placement of the item for consideration.
Is it possible I could make a suggestion? This, you know, let me just be clear. This has zero to do with my trying to usurp anyone getting something on agenda, which I think should be completely clear for this particular item to, you know, the council in general, as I placed on here what I was asked to place on here for this, for this discussion. Staff had originally planned on doing the other pieces in April, so we moved it. What it has to do with everything with my having to be the manager of the city's overall workload and staff. So maybe what I said could suggest, it could just be, I just, I'm asking that this be added so that it involves some consultation with me, so that I can explain, you know, to whoever the council person is that's asking for the agenda item, you know, what's coming up, what are the priorities, what is staff working on, you know, where might it fit in? And of course, if it's something of major importance that needs to go on, you know, as quickly as possible, I will certainly work with that. So maybe it could be something along with, more along with, in consultation with the city manager based on the orderly placement of the item for consideration?
Yeah.
Would that, would that work better?
And I was, I also had some language mapped out in that, so it would, I would kind of modify that, but almost exactly what you said, which is with the timing determined by the council member and in consultation with the city manager and based on the orderly placement of the item for consideration, with the council member making the, with the council retaining the ultimate decision-making on the issue. So we're clearly pointing to consultation, but not taking away from the council if someone has an issue that they feel they need to bring forward.
Are there any more comments? So, city attorney, do we need to take a motion at this time?
You don't. So it sounds like you can, we can go through all these, and then the end, the resolution, if the council so chooses, would be to approve as amended. So we can run through it. I think we probably need to get a little more clarification on that latest modification to see if that's something that the council wants. One thing I do want to, just to raise as an issue, is having the final determination be the council members. Imagine a situation in which you have five council members that are demanding very controversial things to happen on the same night. And if the city manager doesn't have input in that, it may make meetings very difficult. Similarly, if council members aren't going to be there, then certain council members may ask for things, and I'm not implying that's what's happening tonight, but you could see a scenario under which somebody asks for a certain item that may be controversial to occur when other council members who are opposed to a particular item aren't going to be there. So there can be some manipulation that I don't think is intended. So to say that the final decision is the council members, or that one particular council member, is problematic, because you, as a council member, only, it's only three of you that can take any action on behalf of the city, not one council member. So I just have some concern about giving that ultimate power to one individual council member.
So can we say then that the city manager in consultation with?
I think that would be fine, yes, yes. So it would instead, perhaps, if I may, it would be with the timing to be determined in consultation with the city manager.
Yes.
Based on the orderly placement of the item for consideration.
Yes. Okay. So are we all okay with that?
I'm not. I mean, I just want this to be further discussed, because we're sitting here and we're trying to figure out what the best language is. I think this needs more thought, we need to know what's going on, just with all other items also. I'm just not comfortable.
Your point taken. Thank you. Okay, so the next amended section is section A, meetings and item number 11, the remote participation of council members. Anybody have any?
Andrea can add a little bit more for this one.
Okay.
So law requires me, for a council member to participate remotely, the address from where they participate needs to be printed on the posted agenda. That agenda needs to be posted 72 hours in advance of the meeting in a public place where any member of the public can see that agenda and participate wherever that remote particip, or meeting is being, or the remote, the council who's participating, council member who's participating remotely is. In addition, though, with these modifications, it's actually not 72 hours, it would be the Wednesday prior, because our agenda is now required to be posted that Wednesday prior. So that remote agenda needs to be posted the Wednesday before, so much more than 72 hours in advance.
I'm sorry, the remote agenda has to be posted 72 hours.
So by state law, it's 72 hours, but under, I'm not sure which section it is, we're proposing that it actually will be posted the Wednesday prior. So the remote agenda also has to be posted, and the address by, where you will be appearing also needs to be on the agenda. So the city clerk is dealing with a Wednesday deadline.
And so can you explain why the two Fridays?
So if we have, if you look, so if you have, and let's see, we have a meeting today, February 19th, my agenda has to be out February 13th. That means I have to reach, so the Friday prior to that is the 8th. So between the 8th and the 13th, I have to reach somebody, whether they are in Ireland, New York, or wherever, explain our California law, and then our city law, how it has to be posted by that Wednesday in a public place for the council member to participate. It takes quite a lot of explaining. First, I usually start with the front desk, sometimes I get then transferred to the catering office, who then wants to transfer for me to somebody else who's not there that day. And I eventually usually get up to the general manager, who has to take a look at the agenda, because they have quite a regulations on what can be posted in their lobbies, they want to see how big it is, where can it be, and so it takes me several days sometimes to get somebody that has the authority to say, yes, we will post it, get it to them, and then for them to confirm back with me that they have posted it. So it, sometimes it takes me almost a week just to get to somebody. If you're going to the same hotel over and over, that's great, because I can usually talk to the same person, but initially, it's quite a process.
So in your example, from the 8th to the 19th, that's 12 days.
Well, if you let me know on the 8th that you're going out of town, the agenda is posted, that means I have to reach somebody, so, you know, I have to reach somebody and get a confirmation by the 13th that they will post that agenda, and keep that up until now, until a week later, where before it was. Right, on that, by Friday, she loses Saturday and Sunday, so she really only has Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday. What might be a suggestion, if you will, might be that it be the Friday before, as we're talking about the 8th, but no later than the 12th? Because if you don't do it, so that would be the Tuesday before, a week before, if you don't do it by the 12th, it won't be on the agenda, which means you can't appear remotely.
Okay. So let me ask each council member about their thoughts on this. Councilmember?
Yeah, I, I just went to Pakistan and I had, you know, I worked out how to do the posting and all that, and I think I got you the information the Friday before, I think, at that time where it was done. And I don't know if you can put this responsibility on the council member who's going somewhere to make sure the posting is done right?
They're not always at the location. In fact, you are probably the second person, second council member that's actually, very, very rarely do I have a council member do their actual posting. Because of the timing, they're not there to do that posting, so I have to do it.
Because generally, it's not someone's home, it's a hotel, or someplace like that. With your particular situation, it was much easier, because it's a place you know and know people.
Councilmember Luthold?
Yeah, I guess, I, my understanding is that our intention and our goal is to have these agendas out on Wednesday, as opposed to that we are, that we have amended or agreed that we are amending that the agenda shall be published on the Wednesday before. I think that state law is that it needs to be out, as council has always done, by Friday. And we've, and I think in the most recent agenda, we had an amended agenda published by Friday, so it was the 72 hours. So I just wanted to understand, is that the case, that our deadline for the agenda is still the Friday prior, the 72 hours? Or are we actually moving the agendas formally to the Wednesday prior?
No, we're, that's another part of this recommended changes, because staff made a commitment to the city council last year, I believe it was, to have the agendas posted and the packets out Wednesday at the latest. And that was one of the reasons why we were making changes to this document, to reflect that.
Okay, so in light of that, I think I like what was proposed, in terms of the suggestion that you should provide the information by the Friday before, but must provide it no later than, and set the deadline. I think that's a good way to do it. And then, of course, we've heard the discussion, which is, maybe the council member needs to reach out more affirmatively to the location to make sure that it's doable, because otherwise, if it's not done right, they're not going to be attending.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Lawler.
Did you get that, Andrea?
No. I want to confirm the deadline. Yeah, so it would be, they would, and we'll work on the language, but basically, it would be, they would provide the information by the Friday prior, but in no event later than Tuesday at, a week in advance, noon on the Tuesday before, which doesn't give you a lot of time, which is, the council members just need to understand, if she can't get it done, she can't get it done.
So if we have a meeting on the?
Let's go back to this, so you would shoot for, we would say they would provide it by the 8th, but in no event later than noon on the 12th.
12th, right.
Which gives you 24 hours to get it done.
You basically type it in, and they can always post it 72 hours before to comply with it. So the agenda would have the address on it, where the post, you know, where the foreigner is, or the person in the foreign country is, but they don't have to necessarily post it till the, till, I guess, Monday morning or something?
It's a Friday.
72 hours, Friday, the Friday previously.
Sunday.
So you'd actually have from Tuesday to Friday even to make sure they do the posting right, and if they don't do the posting right, then what? Then what happens? The meeting doesn't take place, or?
That person just doesn't participate.
That person doesn't participate.
Right, right.
The meeting still takes place.
The meeting will still take place. So we could modify the language, so such council member shall endeavor to inform the city clerk no later than 12:00 PM, two Fridays prior to the city council meeting, but no later than 12:00 PM the Tuesday prior to the city council meeting. And with the understanding that it may or may not work with that deadline.
And the only, the only thing I would add to that, because of course I work closely with Andrea, is on the Tuesday and Wednesday, you know, the Wednesday's packet day and Tuesday's before, Andrea is usually devoted to working on the packet, and she really cannot spend time on trying to coordinate with a hotel or something like that. So I, you know, what I would say is, we could certainly, of course, if the council wishes us to change this, it would need to be clear that if Andrea cannot pull herself away from her other duties, that it's just not going to happen.
Yeah, all she needs is to put the address on the agenda, that way then the city council person can work it out, and whether they can get posted or not.
Okay, so let me, let's hear from Councilmember Lawler.
So just a couple questions. So state law trumps city, correct? So in terms, in terms of postings?
Depends, shall, depends on what shall means, but, so the Brown Act requires that you post no later than 72 hours.
Right.
You can always do it more than that.
Right.
So there's nothing that would prevent us, which is what's proposed tonight, is that instead of the 72 hours, we would do it, whatever that is, six times 24.
Right.
So we can do more than. The proposal is to do that, is to provide it by the Wednesday prior, because there's been concerns raised by, I think, this council and prior councils, as well as the public, that they didn't have enough time to review especially controversial items. And so staff has been working to shift that date back by two days. So what's before you tonight is proposed to move that by two days back to the Wednesday prior to the council meeting. So we're just shifting everything, timing for agenda packets, materials to be submitted, postings for remote, to accommodate that two-day shift.
Okay, well, I like the idea of changing the wording to allow for flexibility in case of situations where it might be impossible for a council member to get that information to you. So I like the idea of giving us the flexibility of the Friday, the two Fridays before, but no later than Tuesday, giving us a window.
Okay, and I agree with the amended wording so far, so shall I close? Number 11.
Vice Mayor Attorney, we did skip over number nine, which I don't, I think is a non-issue of adding the future agenda items. Is there any council person opposed to adding that new category? No, okay.
There's one other item, which wasn't marked up, it's number 10, council member absences. It says the council member shall inform the city manager no later than 12:00 PM on Friday for the city council meeting. Why does, why do they have to give that much notice that they're not showing up?
That plays into the 72 hours, correct?
Well, they're just not showing up, so.
It could be, I think that's, if some flu hits and three council members can't attend, then there won't be a council meeting. I think that's where this was intended, so that an agenda doesn't get posted if we won't have a quorum. I think that was the intent, but.
Okay. But I guess if they don't tell you and they don't show up, they don't show up.
That's true. But it also lets us know, so that we could post publicly, the meeting is canceled due to lack of a quorum. But of course, something happens and you just can't be here, then we just put something on the door, basically, on the door.
Got it.
Okay, so let me go to section E, the minutes, and item one, the preparation of the minutes. And let's get into questions, discussions, or amendments to this. If none, I do have one. I think there may be a typo here, Terry.
Yes.
It should probably say the address, you can strike out and addresses and put back of persons.
Provided for other, the record shall be made of the names of persons. Yes, we could certainly do that.
Any other comments? Councilmember Lawler? Let me start here, because I keep starting there.
No, but I don't have any comments at this time.
Councilmember Luthold?
No.
Councilmember Alahi?
No.
No.
And Madam Vice Mayor, I do, just to clarify what Councilmember Alahi mentioned previously, I did go back and look, and he's correct. In section B3, it does reference people, when they address the council, providing their address, so we would strike that as well, so that it's internally consistent.
Do we have to provide their name, or is that?
Technically, they're not required to provide their name, but it is helpful. And that's not necessarily a privacy issue, the address is the privacy. And that's, that's not necessarily a privacy issue, the address is the privacy issue.
Okay. So now let's move to the section that we've been all waiting for. And that is section C, mayor and mayor pro temp. Item one, the appointment of mayor and mayor pro temp. Council member Luthold?
Okay. We did hear some very emotional comments today, and heartfelt comments. We received some very emotional and heartfelt written correspondences, which I think might have played a role in the, the comment that the mayor made about decorum and addressing people properly. I want to address some of the comments that were made. And that is, I want to point out that this has been extremely personalized and directed at me. And I think that has been done by some people who somewhat misunderstand what is going on and read much more into this than is here. The issue, from my perspective, of why I brought this up is because I was concerned about the fact that when I researched this, and when I brought this to the attention of the prior council, it did not appear to be the procedure that was called for under state law. And I'm not going to go so far as to saying that this is illegal or that the advice of the city manager was, sorry, the city attorney was necessarily wrong. I brought this up because I was invited to bring this up. If you don't like what the policy is, feel free to bring it up in the next year. I'm bringing it up in the way I'm bringing it up, so that this council has the opportunity to change the policy to a policy that very clearly does comply with the letter and the spirit of the law. Whether we could do it differently, whether the prior council was right or wrong in doing it differently is not the issue. This council has the opportunity to do it the way we want to. Just like the council in 2008 chose to change from how it was done before 2008. So my point is, this is not personal. It's about getting it correct under the law going forward, if this council chooses to adopt it that way. The question of whether this is an attack on the current mayor, I want to say it is absolutely not. It is a question of what the council wants to do in light of this change, if it's adopted. And this council will make the decision about what this council wants to do. And with all due respect for what the prior council did, I would say that all due respect is offered with the same sense of sarcasm that usually comes to it. Which is, the prior council can do whatever they want. The new council was elected to go forward and to take the city forward. And that's what I'm asking that we be allowed to do. I'm asking at the earliest possible date. It was quite crazy, the comment that was made, to say, "How come you didn't do this sooner?" This is the first opportunity that I've had to bring this forward, and I had to struggle to get it on the agenda. So I've brought it forward. I'm suggesting that as step number one, we make the changes to the policy. And then, as a council, if the council adopts this change, then we need to address the issue of whether this council feels it's appropriate at a meeting where everyone is present, to determine who we choose for our mayor and our vice mayor going forward. And as I said on December 4th, it's very possible, this is not me personally, it's very possible this council will choose to keep things the way they are. Or they may choose to do things differently, but that is our choice if we make this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Lawler?
As I stated before, I, I, I believe this is, makes perfect sense to comply with California government code. And again, to the point of representation, that we are the current city council. And as elected members, we would be representing our community.
Council member Alahi?
Yeah, my, you know, I've, I've kind of said my piece. And my concern, obviously, is this is a very important thing that you're considering. All five of us should be here to consider it. There's no haste in this thing, there's no emergency in this thing. I mean, mentioning that a budget is going to come up next month. If you're changing how the mayor gets elected, and if it's prospective, it doesn't really matter. It's not going to affect anything now. So if the only reason to hasten it is because you want a different mayor to consider the budget, then I can understand the haste, otherwise, there's no haste. So I would really, and, and I pointed out a bunch of things that need to be corrected on this, to be reviewed it. And I'm also really concerned about the appearance. I mean, that's, that's what's, you know, maybe the appearance will hopefully not happen. So if the election of mayor is not, it's going to, changing the mayor is not going to be the next item that comes up, then, then we'll be fine. There's no issue about the appearance of what people think is going on. And, but I'm really concerned about the appearance. And I'm really concerned about the person who's going to be affected most by that change not being here. So I would ask that the whole thing go to an ad hoc committee. We look at it, clean it up a little bit, allow Mr. Rogers to participate. He's been a mayor for a while, and he'll give us some good insights. We need his opinion. I mean, the reason you have people on council is so you can get the wisdom of what they have and what they're thinking. You may not agree with it, I mean, Sean's been brilliant about how he's looked at it. And we may not agree with him, but it's good to have that, you know, that insight. And Curtis would have his insight that we should also be benefiting from.
Okay, thank you. So let me give my input here. Obviously, I find this difficult, because this impacts me directly. It does make absolute sense, and perfect sense to me, that the new council should have a vote in selecting their leaders. After all, council members have to work with them, right? And I believe it fosters unity. However, it makes me uncomfortable to think that I may not be in this position legally. I want to do the right things right. I am hoping that the council will vote for me again. But it's better for me to sleep well at night. Okay? So for this reason, I will probably end up voting for this. So, having said that, there was, there's one other item here that council member Luthold is requesting. And that is to set the date on the selection of the mayor and mayor pro temp for this year. But before we do that, can you hold on, please? Our city attorney wants to say a few words.
So just on the proposal, the language in the resolution before you on the mayor, mayor pro temp is slightly different than council member Luthold had requested. I just wasn't sure if people had noticed that. We did try to make it very clear exactly when, so we spelled out, in non-election years it occurs, and this is who votes on it. So it is slightly different. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that. And the only other thing I, I want to say, and I, I, I want council member Turner to sleep well at night. We are not doing anything illegal. And I'm not going to get into shall, is, or is, or whatever it means. But what we have been doing is perfectly legal. That being said, this council, it is within your authority to decide what that process will be. But I just want it to be very clear for all of you, the public, and the, and the record, that the city has not done anything improperly. There are other provisions in the government code that use the word shall that are directory, as I believe this section is. The council has the authority to make changes to that process. Town of Los Gatos has done the same thing. So I just want to be very clear, we have not been acting illegally. The process that the council followed in the past is acceptable, as is the process that council member Luthold is recommending.
Okay. So, I guess you have to make the?
So we do have two, so we did it as two separate parts?
Yes.
So the first would be to vote on the Resolution 1691.5 as amended. And, and I can walk through all those changes if that is necessary. And then after the vote on that, then we would move to council member Luthold's request.
So we'll have two resolutions?
Two, two motions.
Okay. So do you want to make the motion, then?
So I won't make the motion, but if someone wants to make the motion, I can then read through the modifications.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the full and entire report as amended the regulations and guidelines for the conduct of public meetings?
So the motion would be to approve Resolution number 1691.5 as amended. That would be the motion, and then I'll read through the amendments.
Okay.
And I would like to make that motion?
Please do so.
Okay, so, so moved?
I don't see a?
Oh, we've got to wake everything back up again.
I have a second. So just to clarify, so these are the amendments. In section seven, we would remove the language regarding the city manager decision on the timing of agenda. And instead, it would read, any, and, sorry, items of business may be placed on the agenda by any council member, the city manager, or the city attorney, with the timing to be determined in consultation with the city manager based on the orderly placement of the item for consideration. The remainder of section seven would remain as proposed. Under section, section nine would remain as proposed. That's the adding orders of business to the agenda. Section 11, remote participation of council members, that would be amended to read, "In the event a council member desires to participate in a council meeting from a remote location, such council member shall endeavor to inform the coun, the city clerk no later than 12:00 PM, two Fridays prior to the coun, city council meeting, but in no event later than 12:00 PM the Tuesday before the council meeting." And the remain, or modifications to remain as proposed. Section B3, we would remove the requirement for people addressing the council to provide their address. Section C1 would be as proposed in the resolution. And in the final modification would be to the section regarding minutes. And we would add back in the term as, of person. So it would be the name of persons addressing the city council. And otherwise, it would remain as proposed.
Okay.
So I, I have a, council member Luthold has made the motion, and council member Lawler has seconded. Your voting screen should be up. Okay. So I have three votes in. Okay, I have all four votes in. I'm going to stop the voting. Record it. Your motion passes three, three to one.
Okay, so do we?
I think we need to take a quick, quick break.
Yes, a 10-minute break?
At least five, I'd say.
Hi. Can I go after him? So, in addition, council member Luthold is requesting to set a date on the selection of the mayor and the mayor pro temp for this year. So do you want to make any comments about that?
Yes, again, it's simply putting this matter before this council. If we would like to make that choice, which I believe we should, that we should set a date, and we should obviously put that on a date when Mayor Curtis is going to be here to participate in that process. It's my understanding that we've reached out to everybody through staff, and that from what I have heard, there are no absences expected at the March 5th meeting. And so my recommendation is to hold this selection process for the mayor and mayor pro temp at the March 5th meeting. And so I'd like to make that motion. Question?
Council member Alahi?
Thank you. Yeah, my, I mean, you've already passed a resolution that says how a mayor is going to be elected and the pro temp is going to be elected. The resolution is in place. You don't need another motion to select the mayor, because this, there was nothing illegal about the previous resolution. So it's not like we're trying to correct some illegality. What you need is a motion to remove the mayor. So if you want to be honest about it, just say, we want to put, put a motion on the table to remove the mayor, so that people and the public and the city of Monteserino understands that's what's going on. You're not putting a motion up to correct an illegality. I think you've also conceded that you don't argue about whether it's legal or illegal. So if you're not conceding, challenging the illegality, you already have a mayor. So there's no reason to have another hearing to appoint a different mayor. Unless you make a motion to say, "We want to remove the mayor," which you can do as a city council. So I, you know, I would think, let's be honest about it. Let's put the motion that we are going to put forward, which is to remove the mayor and have a new, new election. Not a motion to correct an illegality, because it's not illegal. The city council has already told us it's not illegal, what was done.
Council member Lawler?
I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay, so should we vote on what?
You have a motion, so you need to see if you have a second. And if you do, then you would take a vote. If you don't, then the motion would fail for lack of a second.
Could you say that again, please?
So I think you had a motion made by council member Luthold. To set March 5th?
Just one second, I have a question.
So you have a motion from council member Luthold, but I don't believe we have a second.
If we may have a request for public comment.
Oh, there you go.
We have a request for public comment?
Yes, I guess so.
Okay. Former mayor Bergen Craig?
Hello again, council. I do agree with council member Jabid, and I think this is not correcting an issue. And I think before you vote to remove the mayor, I would hope that you would take a look at his record, and if you would take a look at if he's done anything wrong, and if he's done anything to bring this pleasure or any type of embarrassment to this council, which I don't think you'll be able to find. He has served over five and a half years now, in a very admirable capacity. And I hope that you will just take that into consideration, especially since he's not here really to defend himself tonight. I'm just, hope you'll do that. And I just want to say that Monteserino has always been the envy of the county. When I would attend the city association meetings, and I'd listen to the divisiveness and the uncivil acts that were done between the councils of some of our neighboring cities, it was always nice to be able to hold my head high and say, "We have a very civil, we have a council that has a lot of common sense, and we have a council that really just wants to do the right thing." And, and I, I hope that your actions tonight will keep the reputation of Monteserino at that level. Thank you very much.
I, we have another. Up to you.
Ed Turner, 15232 Stratford Court. Difficult issue. When I first heard about this, I didn't see it as an attempt to remove Mayor Rogers. I saw it I saw it more as the current council affirming their leadership. It seems that most other people don't see it that way. They see it as a really attempt to remove the mayor and the vice mayor.
And me too.
So in my view, we've accomplished... You have accomplished what you set out to do in getting the mayors, the leaders elected by the new council. And just... And I would suspect that if you have this vote in a couple of weeks, that you'd probably reelect the current mayor and vice mayor. But why go through that process? Why put the city through the consternation of dealing with that, especially given the appearance that, you know, many people have said, several people have said it is tonight? So I would just encourage you to let things stand as they are. Thank you.
Hello again. The mayor serves at the pleasure of the council. At any time, you can agendize an item to remove the mayor. I agree with Councilmember Alahi that if you want to hold a new selection for the mayor, you should not try to hide behind what you're really doing, which is removing the current mayor. And I believe if you do that, it will make each of you look bad, not just on Nextdoor. It will make you look bad. So if you are going to do this, don't try to hide behind selecting a new mayor. Call it what it is. You're removing a mayor, which you have the ability to do anytime. That is within your right. That is your power. It is not like there is a mayor who's not serving or who is serving without you having any input. You've had input every meeting. You will have input every meeting onto whether the mayor continues serving. So I would just like to say that, in my opinion, if you are going to proceed with this, you should call it what it is. Have an agenda item to remove the current mayor. Thank you.
So let me ask this. This is not just removal... This is not just for the mayor, but it's also the mayor and the vice mayor, correct?
I think that'd be a question for Councilmember Luthold, but that if the logic is it was done improperly as to the mayor, then it would be the same for the vice mayor.
Yes.
Or mayor pro temp.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yes.
If I may speak to this? The issue is that the policy of the city that's now been adopted is in clear compliance with the state law. The issue is that this council has not had the opportunity to do what the state says that we have the right to do, which is to choose our mayor essentially as one of our very first acts when we come into office. And quite frankly, this is not about removing a mayor. It is about this council as one of its first acts, and we haven't had many yet, affirming who it is we want to lead our city. And so my request is that we have this affirmative vote next council meeting. Again, it is very possible that the council will choose to keep the current mayor and vice mayor. It is possible that something different would be chosen by the council. That is not me making that decision. That is me allowing the council to make that decision. And any of you who's sitting out in the audience judging how I'm going to vote based on this may find yourself surprised, because I have not decided how I will vote. It is simply that I believe this council, as a way of getting off on the right foot, as opposed to being told that I'm doing something to get us off on the wrong foot, we should have the opportunity to do what we should have done on December 18th, what the state says we should have done. It wasn't done that way. We've corrected the process going forward. If the rest of the council agrees, we have the opportunity to affirm what it is we want to do on March 5. And that's what I'm requesting. And each of us can make our decisions between now and March 5 to do what we would like to do at that meeting. Response?
This is very difficult, obviously.
But I appreciate all that. And like Mr. Turner said, if it's not necessary to go through this, why put the whole city into it? And I... So if everybody's going to vote the same way and the same mayor is going to get elected, then we don't need to do it. There's a basic hornball concept in the law. You don't make in law, which says you don't make a law retroactive. So we passed a law today. You change a rule today. It is not going to be retroactively imposed. That's the basic concept. You know, you don't punish somebody for a crime that wasn't a crime and they did an act and make it a crime law. That's the basic thing. What we're trying to do now is say, "Okay, we've now changed the law, and we're going to retroactively punish or do another election." Why are we doing it? Because we feel like we should be doing something, maybe. But I, you know, it's an exercise we don't need. And really, throughout, I mean, you know, the people who got elected on the city council this time got elected because we said we are going to be very transparent. We're going to let everybody know what's going on, and we're going to be honest about it. So if you can do that, then that's what I'd say. Call the motion what it is. It's a motion to remove the mayor. If you're not going to remove the mayor, we are then trying to apply a law retroactively, which you can do, a rule retroactively, which you can do. So either way, I think this is not the place to go. You know, give it some time. If you don't like the mayor at some point, file the motion, and, you know, maybe we'll all unanimously vote to remove him. But at this point, let's not hide behind some rules, and let's be very transparent, because that's the whole thing. We said we'll be transparent about it.
Yeah, this is definitely a difficult situation, and I do wish Curtis were here. I mean, perhaps he may have had the choice to be here, considering this was on the agenda. I am somewhat concerned about his focus. He's not here today. He's missed other meetings. And I know he's been here for a long time, and he's been, you know, he's done his service to the community. But we are a new council, and we have... We were voted in to effect change in our city and take care of our city. And I think having the opportunity to choose our leader, and it may very well be our current mayor, maybe just giving us the opportunity to make that decision, just kind of going through that process, might be okay.
Okay. So let me ask again. Do I have a motion to set the date on the selection of the mayor and the mayor pro temp for this year?
So moved.
On your screens, do you have the opportunity to make a second?
No.
No, you don't. Okay. I'm going to... I'm going to... I'm going to clear this motion. Okay. Did it pop up? Voting? A motion?
No. A waiting item.
Why don't we just call it... Is there a second? And she can just enter it into the system.
Okay, let me do that, because it's not populating. Okay, so I have Councilmember Luthold that has moved to place on the March 5 agenda another selection of the mayor and the mayor pro temp. Do you have a second? I have a second of Councilmember Lawler.
Not coming up on this screen.
It's a little bit delayed.
It takes a second.
It takes a second for it to... Okay, so your voting screen should be up? No? I have three votes in. I have all votes are in. The motion passes three. Three to one.
Okay, should we take a motion to take the full and entire report? Are we done?
No, we're done with that item.
So the next order of business is commission reports. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
Yes.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Lawler.
I attended the Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority on January 23. There's nothing to report for that, but I did attend... I also attended on the same day the Santa Clara Valley Water District meeting. We were updated on the water supply master plan, the final plan, which will be presented to the board in June. This plan focuses on three main goals of securing existing supplies and infrastructures, increasing water conservation and reuse, such as storm water capture, water recycling, and efficient use of existing supplies, and optimizing existing supplies and infrastructure by increasing storage capability and system flexibility. The district also announced it's joined San Francisco Public Utilities Commission in a lawsuit against the state Water Resources Control Board, believing the state's plan to divert water through San Joaquin could impact our aquifers and negatively affect the water district's ability to meet water supply needs during dry years. That's it.
Just a question, Ms. Lawler. Was there any discussion about the San Jose City merger with the Connecticut Water District? Because I know there's an opposition that's gathering against allowing San Jose City... San Jose Water to merge with Connecticut Water.
Not particularly at that meeting, no, but there was a forum down at Santa Clara... Down at the city hall. Separate.
Are you done?
I'm done, yes. I'm done. Finished.
Councilmember Luthold, do you want to report? Should I move to Councilmember Alahi first?
Yeah, no, just very briefly, I do have a report. I attended the Santa Clara County Joint Powers Authority Library Board Meeting. It was very instructional. We have a very, very strong library through the Joint Powers, jointly Saratoga and Los Gatos and all of the local authorities, all the way down to Gilroy, working together. They're running a really tight ship over there with the libraries. I think we can look forward to a lot of activity from the library. I want to point out, they specifically thanked our prior mayor, Burton Craig, for the many years that he served on that committee and the incredible job he did. I have very large shoes, literally and figuratively, working on that board, and I'm really looking forward to working with this group of people over there. So more news will be coming from the libraries, but this is something great resource we have and wonderful authority to work with.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, I attended a couple of boards. One was the VTA Board of Directors meeting. It's a VTA Public Advisory Council. Mr. Luthold sent me to attend the meeting of the Board of Directors of VTA, but I'm not... We are not a member of the Board of Directors. We're just a member of the Public Advisory Committee. The VTA has about three or four committees, and this is the one we are on. They're trying to cut about $15 million from their budget, and the way they're trying to do it is limit buses to where there is heavy traffic and where there's less than 10 people an hour. They're going to cut that out. What the major effect is... Impact is going to be on four homeless families who take the VTA buses from 1 a.m. to 4 a.m. at night. Those buses are going to be cut off, and these four homeless will now be busless also. They'll not have any place to go. There was also a gun summit, which isn't part of a committee, but Ms. Lawler was there also. And one takeaway from that is there's a gun violence restraining order, temporary restraining order. So if you suspect somebody is going to mess up with their guns or go shoot somebody, you can get a restraining order from the court, and the police can come and take their guns away. So a lot of people aren't familiar with it, because it's not easy to do anything or take guns away. But if you suspect that something is going to happen, domestic violence, employment issues, you can ask for a gun restraining order. And that's a pretty easy... You know, you can get that, and it's very, very effective. I also attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and they're dealing with the issue of... Silicon Valley Clean Energy produces energy, and they transmit it over PG&E lines, so they have contracts with PG&E, and they're concerned about with the PG&E bankruptcy. Hopefully, I can give them some additional support. As I've been practicing, I'm a bankruptcy certified specialist, and I can kind of look at some of that stuff now. How much free advice I can give them, I don't know, but it is a difficult time for them. But they seem to be okay. They're not affected so far by the bankruptcy. Coming up, there's a Chinese New Year parade in San Francisco on February 23rd, so if you guys want to attend that, there's going to be a million people who march in that parade in San Francisco and about 2 million in New York. And so I look forward to taking part in that parade. Thank you.
Okay. So let me report on the Women's Leadership Summit that I attended that was hosted by Cindy Chavez. And there was a section in there that I thought was pretty interesting. It was on housing 101. And we talked... They talked about Gavin Newsom's housing-related budget proposal, and there are three major things in that proposal. One is the effort to increase state oversight and control of local governments as it relates to housing. There's also a dramatically supposedly increased goal to local agencies, allow oversight and enforcement actions against local agencies as needed. And then the third one is to allow state to take transportation funds if housing production is slower than their RNHA goals.
That's all you need?
That's the bad news. So on that, let me move to the next order of business, which is the city manager's report.
I just have two things. One is, which we have been advertising on Nextdoor and also sent this correspondence to the city council, the emergency preparedness and pancakes with Senator Jim Beal. I can't think of two things that go better together than emergency preparedness and pancakes. So I encourage everyone on the council and everyone in the community to RSVP for this event. If you go on to the senator's website, you can get more details. It's this Saturday. Breakfast begins at 8:30, program at 9 o'clock. So I encourage everyone that possibly can go, go. The only other thing is just a note to the community and a reminder to the council that March 30, the city council will be holding their goal-setting session 9 o'clock. We'll begin advertising this shortly to the community, and we'll be having a lot more information that will be provided to the city council in advance that talks about the process and all the various pieces. It will be coming to you in the next 10 days, two weeks approximately. So but just a note to the community that March 30, city council goal-setting here at city hall, Saturday, 9 o'clock. Be here.
Done?
That's it.
Okay, so our next meeting is March 5 at 7 o'clock here at city hall. Since there's no further business, let's move to the...